Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, welcome to our work session on December 27th. Hope we all had a Merry Christmas and a great holiday time.
We wish you a Happy New Year.
Yes, let's do that before we forget it. Mr. Fleming, I wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Yes, we want fewer shootings and fewer fires. All potholes fixed immediately. And I want the water purified, the waste.
And all our employees working safely.
Yes.
There we go. Okay. We have two items. The first on the agenda for the Mayor's Award and for the Civic Recognition. The third item is a preliminary adoption of a second reading of ordinance in many various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code, the city of Burlington. And Mr. Crooks, do you want to come up and just briefly refresh this again? And the two of us can't decide if we want to waive this reading or not, so.
We can, we want to. We're in control, aren't we?
Basically, what we're doing is we're trying to stay current with the latest version of the International Fire Code. So, the fire department, I've sat down and I reviewed through all of the different sections in there and made my recommendations to pretty much stay with what we did in 2012. So, we're just going to go from, or asking the council to approve going from the 2012 to the 2015 International Fire Code, which the state fire marshal has adopted as well effective about two or three months ago. So, we're going to stay current with what the state. Plus, we're also changing the times for the recreational burning. We're trying to do that all in one swoop.
Okay.
That makes sense.
As far as I'm concerned, waiving is okay, but I guess we'd be prepared to do that, but I don't know how we proceed with that or not. While you're there, could you talk about that donation from ADM? Do you know about that?
Sure, I do know very little about it. Deputy Chief Don Ryan had worked very closely with ADM and worked through their ADM care program. And through their $1,400 donation that we received, the fire department was able to purchase two sets of Milwaukee Tools. And more importantly, a lot of what we do is going with different types of batteries. Instead of carrying the big heavy generators on the trucks, we're actually going more portable and using different batteries. So now by doing these Milwaukee Tools, we all, all the different tools that we carry on the trucks all have the same types of batteries and they're all interchangeable.
Oh, okay.
So, with this donation, we were able to purchase the Milwaukee Tools and we'll have one on each set of the first out engines. So, it's a great asset or a great.
It does a number of different things than.
Correct, yeah.
Or the same unit.
Yep.
Okay. Well, cool. Great.
So, it's a neat addition to the department. So, the deputy chief, Don Ryan, worked very closely with ADM on that purchase.
And we want to thank them for their donation.
Yep.
Appreciate all the donations that come. Thank you, sir. Consent agenda, we have a resolution approving a refund of liquor license for motos. They're no longer in business, is that correct?
Is that correct? They're out of business?
That is correct. Well, they're no longer selling alcohol. I don't track this stuff, so.
Okay.
You know.
Oh, that's Kathleen. That takes care of that, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as underwriter for issuance of general obligation refunding bond, Series 2017 A and B.
We're looking to do borrowing this year. The major item that was on the CIP plan to do for borrowing was a remodel of the former or current US Bank building that will be the police department, 2.2 million. We also have two different TIF bonds that we'll be looking to do. One's a sales tax TIF, or it's listed TIF, sales tax bond that is for the flood wall in the neighborhood of $4.7 million, looking to borrow this round. And then we'll, there are several different TIF projects that we've been working on that we'll be looking to do a potential borrowing on. We've had the rise for the silicon project. We had the potential rise on the GE project.
GE, yes.
And then we also have the Dresser Inn site cleanup. We've done some internal borrowings on some of those projects for a portion of those debts, but we need to do some final borrowings for the full amounts. We're looking in the $2.8 million range, just what we'd anticipated for the projects to be done there. We're trying to stay at, we're, that puts us at a point where we're just under $10 million, which is actually a pretty important figure in terms of bank qualification. If you're, if we're staying under the $10 million, it allows, I guess, an interest-free bond purchase for those who have upper incomes that can purchase bonds and write off the interest income on their.
Oh, really?
Taxes. That's beyond what my ability is to worry about, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
But it is, it gives some favorable, it gets favorable tax treatment, which also means we get better, a little bit better financing rates on it.
Yeah, sure.
So, our total that we have that we're looking to borrow is going to be right in that $9.7 million range, just under $10 million. We, the final amount may move up or down a little bit on that. And the project that would make it move up or down would be the flood wall improvements. We're going to have some, a portion of that project's going to be over cost from what we'd originally anticipated. The existing flood wall they're hoping to tie into, tie onto, and they're not, as they looked at that wall, they're not going to be able to do that. They're going to have to essentially take that wall out and establish pilings down to.
New footings.
Put new footings in. That's going to make that more expensive and then as that goes on, they're going to have, we're going to have to have some discussion about what does that mean for making adjustments to the project to keep close to that 26.2 million total. And also, it may mean that we move around the timing of some of the costs. If we do a little bit more work on this first phase, we may do a little bit less work on some of the later phases, but we're still working through that part of the details on that. The other part of this, we do have one bond issue that is close to a potential for being, having enough savings to refinance. It's a 2011 bonds that has a little over 7 million outstanding principal. And that's one as we move forward that they'll continue to monitor. They're putting us in position to do that bar, that refinancing because it, right now it looks like there, it would make sense that there's enough savings in there to make it worthwhile doing.
I'm glad we do that. That's good. I have a question about the flood wall.
Yeah.
If we, it's almost $5 million borrowing and what's the term, how many years are we committed to, to do that then? Is it, is it still 15 or is it going to be less?
That is set to go through 2033, so it's a longer one. And it really has to do with the way the financing is on, or the payments that we receive from the state.
Okay.
Increase year by year. The first year was 260, 260,000. The later years are more like 2 million a year. And in order to, when you have backloaded revenue, but a front-loaded desire to try to get some flood improvements done, you end up.
Spread it out.
Yeah.
And do we, do we have requirements for timeline? Do we have to be on a certain timeline in order to stay qualified for this?
We have to hit our timeline. We have to do updates to the, there's a board at the, at the state level that we have to keep updated as to what our progress is. We can adjust our timeline with them, but we have to, to do that, we'd have to then go and have a discussion with them about what's going on. And even with, as we've looked at this first phase and seen that we're going to have some costs that are significantly higher than what we'd anticipated, it means that we'll probably look at adjusting other pieces out of the work, scope of work that we talked about doing with them.
Right, okay.
So, what you see in the letter here, the engagement letter, we're looking to engage them to help us with doing the background work for structuring the bonds. And you see in the packet, they're helping us to, then to market them and go for coordination of closing a sale. So, they walk us, they do all the steps of walking us through the borrowings, which I'm very happy for because I wouldn't want to have to try to do it myself.
This is a normal thing, what we normally do.
Yep, we've had to do this a couple of times. And I, I don't know if you know, Stephanie, we're, some of these things that came out of some SEC modification of rules of about 2013. And they, they really came out of the last financial crisis of some of the different rules that they have for steps that need to be taken.
Okay. And the next thing is associated with that?
Certainly is.
Resolution approving an amendment agreement with Piper Jaffray coming to serve as dissemination agent?
Yep, so as you see, the, I don't know what it has on here for the modification, but we have a dissemination agreement in place already. And what you have here is modifying it to incorporate the two bond issues that we're looking at doing. The one, the refunding bond, potentially refunding the 2011 series and refinancing it.
Yeah.
And then the second, the borrowing of the, close to $10 million for new projects.
Okay. Are you okay, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fitting, it's your turn. We have two things here for Mr. Fitting to, to address. Resolution approving agreement with H.R. Green of Cedar Rapids for engineering services at Burlington Wastewater Treatment Facility for nutrient reduction strategy. And everybody keeps talking about how expensive that might be, but we'll see. Resolution approving agreement with H.R. Green of Cedar Rapids for engineering services at the Burlington Wastewater Treatment for evaluation of local limits. And I, I'll just let you talk about those two if you would like to, sir.
Well, the nutrient reduction strategy feasibility study is probably precipitated by the, primarily by the hypoxia zone in the Gulf of Mexico.
Yeah.
And all the watersheds that contribute water to, ultimately to the Mississippi River makes its way down there. And they feel that there are technologies and means that could be utilized, both at wastewater facilities, which are point source discharges, and also agricultural. I mean, there's agricultural runoff that also contributes to that problem. And so, anyway, the state of Iowa has developed a strategy that's been acceptable to USCPA. And so, this is a pass-through from the state to the municipalities as they issue, the municipalities a new permit for allowance to operate your facility and to discharge to the receiving body, which in our case is the Mississippi River directly. In that permit, which is a five-year permit, they've included a requirement for the city of Burlington to have an analysis, a study conducted of our collection system, our users, the collection system, the wastewater treatment process itself, and look at what would be feasible, reasonable for the community to implement to reduce the amount of total nitrogen and reduce the total phosphorus that's contained in our treated water that we release to the receiving stream. This study is to be completed by June 1st of 2018. And in that study, that we will be submitting to the state, it will recognize all the various contribution points such as industries. Are there industries out there that could make some modifications cost-effectively as opposed to removing it all at the wastewater treatment plant? If we had to do it at the wastewater treatment plant, what are the technologies, the structural, chemical means to reduce these two pollutants down to an acceptable level? And what the cost of that installation would be? And then, of course, there would be annual upkeep, maintenance and operations cost. And the study is supposed to pull all that information together, summarize it, and have a recommendation that we would submit to the state saying, this is what we find, this is what we would propose to do in order to significantly reduce these two pollutants in our plant effluent. Then they would look at that and try to, I guess, work with the city ultimately to what we should do and when we should do it.
And so, the two key words there are feasible and reasonable?
Yes.
And they're really going to go with that?
I don't really know what that means, to be honest with you. I guess the ruling body at the time will make a determination of what that is.
Unfortunately, that is the case. The, the studies that I've seen come out in the last couple of years, there have been a couple of communities that have looked at this and it hasn't been, they've ended up talking about what's, what is feasible to accomplish. And it hasn't been significant things that they've had to do. But that can vary depending on what the determination is or what the makeup is of who's running the DNR at the time that the.
That's right.
This comes out for us.
Yeah. Now, I have heard comments made that they'll take in consideration what a particular community has ongoing at the time.
That's good.
And of course, we're in the midst of a sewer separation project and I'm not sure what flood mitigation would come into play, but it could potentially delay implementation of the study. I've actually kind of argued a little bit with the state that I felt it was kind of silly for us. If that's the case, if it could be delayed, why do all this study now? Because technologies are changing and improving all the time. If it's not something we're going to do, be doing, be required to do in the very near future, the study could become of no value or certainly less value five years from now or 10 years from now than what it would show us at this point in time. But we are required to do this by June 1st of 2018.
Okay.
And some of the things that, like the league is working on a nutrient trading program, whether they can get something that is workable, they, they've received a grant to put together this, this program and they're trying to, and it's something that the state has bought into as being a, that's feasible. It may be that depending on how that goes, that there's the ability to invest in other projects, say do stormwater infiltration projects within a given river basin to purify water there to reduce nitrates and phosphates there.
Before it even gets to us.
And that's outside of our, that's outside of our sewer treatment system.
Could be an agricultural area or, you know, forested area or something like that where you could maybe make improvements.
Some buffer zone or something, yeah.
So, we don't know what's going to happen with that at this point, but that is an option that the league is looking at. It's one that even Charlie has, has been talking with Dustin Miller, who used to be the league's attorney, but is now at a private law firm, is still heavily involved in this issue. And there, there are some different private projects that are potential things to have happen as well.
I remember that from the league meeting this past year.
We just don't know where it's going to be. And again, as Don's highlighting, this is something that's part of this five-year program. And by the time you get to the next five-year NPDES permit, you don't know how it's going to be looked at.
And then with the change in the political picture in Washington.
That can influence it too.
What's going to happen with EPA and the DNR? Who knows? I mean.
Right. Now, I would point out that the cost for this study by H.R. Green is indicated as being $30,000. I do have, I did budget for this study, but I only budgeted $25,000 in like the current budget year. So, there is a $5,000 shortfall there that we'll have to make up somehow.
Okay.
We'll cut the police by 5,000 here in fire. I don't really.
No, I don't want to see that.
I know. I'm still in the holiday mood.
Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate the thought. We need to find other means to accomplish that.
Okay, and the next item also.
The local limits.
Local limits, what does that mean?
That, that also is something that is, was included in our new MPDES permit. It's a requirement for us to reevaluate what is commonly referred to as the local limits. And local limits means it's for the local facility. It looks at the wastewater treatment processes that we have in place, which have changed since the last time the local limits were looked at. Processes, individual processes within the wastewater treatment plant have weakness for a particular pollutant. Each one maybe varies from another biological process. And one tank could be affected in an adverse way by one type of pollutant where another, the next process down, it might be susceptible to be able to handle that particular pollutant, but maybe a different pollutant would have a negative impact on it. So, it's a series of processes, each with, have a unique set of weaknesses and strengths. And the concept of the local limit is to look at the individual processes, identify where you need to be in order to protect that process, identify where you need to be to protect the next process in line.
I see.
We generate sludge or it's now called biosolids, that's land applied. That material has to meet certain criteria. And so, the local limit study would be looking at all our various processes. And of course, through time, and again, technology, sensitivity testing, they've been able to refine with just how much can this particular process withstand before it being adversely affected or chronically affected. And so, the state wants us to reevaluate our current facility, look at the processes and determine what the maximum loading that should be allowed to come in to our facility. That would mean we might need to go back to specific industries that have a, have a particular pollutant that is of concern and look at them and do something. It may say that a new industry that's seeking to come here, we may not have the space without them doing pretreatment of their own to make sure that we don't exceed that doorway, that local limit, that maximum limit that would come into the plant. And of course, we have waste streams within the plant that recirculate liquids after we de-water the sludge. There's the filtrate that contains material that goes back. And so, all of this has to be looked at and we need to protect the process so ultimately the sludge or the biosolids that goes out to the land meets the minimum criteria and the water leaving the plant and going to the surface water in the Mississippi River meets a certain water quality standard. And this particular study needs to be done by June 1st of 2017, one year earlier, so.
Okay.
They gave, gave me a price of $13,800 to conduct that analysis. I don't know what I was thinking, but I only have $5,000 budgeted for that in this current fiscal year. And again, that's another shortfall that we're going to have to make up.
Okay.
Now, if the city manager wants to reply to that or the treasurer or.
We can do it. It has to be done.
I think, I think we can cover it out of your carryover balance.
Okay, not carryover balance. I usually do have some money that gets carried over from one fiscal year to the next.
That's an inside joke, I assume.
Have you, well, look, just notice what their carryover balance is when we get down there and.
Okay. It's coming up here in the treasurer's report.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I do have one.
I guess part of it is these are mandated things that have to happen.
Right.
And it's, be nice if we, if they were at the figures that we had budgeted for them, but the, the studies have to occur and are going to, a lot of this is going to be on capital projects that will have, the, the limits isn't necessarily on capital projects that will be upcoming, but they're essentially just part of the cost of what the capital projects are and we're going to end up, as we move forward, most likely having to jockey around which one do we do at what, what point? We can't fund everything that is being forced, forced down on us along with maintaining our system.
So, we need some.
Regardless of how much balance when we get down to their fund, there is a significant balance, but it's, the size of the projects that we have coming down, we just don't have to.
We can't make them work.
You're saying we need favor with the powers that be? My question, how, how long you been doing this job?
Wait a minute now. Every time that gets asked, I'm beginning to wonder what's going on here. I'd say I've been here for, what has it been? It's been, it'll be, has it been 30, it's been 35 years.
35 years.
I thought this was our 80th review next year.
Yeah. Seems like it, doesn't it?
And he's only been here fi, he's only been here five. Anyway, this is one of the things that I've appreciated since I've been here.
No, actually, it's only been 34. I've got, it'll be 35 this May.
It's one of the things I've appreciated since I've been on, the council is getting to know all you people and just what an outstanding staff we have. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
And I know 34 or 5 years is a long time, but you're not going to leave anytime soon.
No, I'm, well, not that I know of. But you never know.
You never know.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Don.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? Are we okay?
I think you're okay. Just watch those nitrates.
The next item is a set public date for a hearing, January 16th, for consideration of ordinance. Amendment to ordinance number 3151, arts prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits. And we'll have that public hearing on the 16th. And we've already scheduled a public hearing for annexation on the 16th. So, that's just a public hearing. All right, we're ready to move on to discussion items?
Would you like to hear about the wells?
Not particularly.
Okay.
I took care of him.
Did you?
No.
But that's not, nothing personal, Nick, but it'll come up on the 9th when we're ready for it, so. All right. Treasurer report, Mrs. Crowner.
Okay, there's two of them in your packet again.
Yeah, I see that.
This should be the last month there's two in the packet. So, June 30th is in there and nothing has changed since the last time that you've seen it from last month. So, this is where we ended the year.
Okay. And it all looks pretty good to me.
Yeah, the general fund ended at about 14.4% approximately, so.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But we still have some, weren't we going to get rid of those negative balances in a couple?
It's a, it's a timing thing because we transfer the balances at the end of the year and that's like in receivable, so on here it's.
Okay.
Which one are you talking about?
Well, I'm talking about.
Like if he's looking at the SMID fund, I don't know if that's the one you're looking at and employee benefits.
No, I was, I was thinking of Zine Hill's golf and.
Those will be, those are scheduled to be done this year.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking of. All right.
Okay.
Okay, then, what was the other one I was going to ask you about? Oh, again, it's vehicle maintenance, that's because of transfers coming up, is that what you're saying?
Are you looking at?
I'm looking for the month ended November 30th.
Okay, yes. Vehicle maintenance and property maintenance funds are always a month behind because they don't really get trued up till the end of the year.
Okay.
So, the expenses are there, but we're not billing them out. Sorry, I thought you were still on June.
No, I was skipping around.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Anything else?
Have you seen anything, Jim, that we should be concerned about?
No, as you, one of the things I'd mentioned that you can see there, the wastewater plant has, what, $5 million? And you have some capital projects that have another 1.8 million or a little bit more than that that we came into the year with. One of the things that I tried to do was to map out funding. We're supposed to do three and a half million. If we ever get started on doing some, the Masl, which we'll get, hopefully get a contract on, not this council meeting, but the next one after that. When we start going and doing construction there, that's designed to work out to about three and a half million dollars a year over the course of about eight, eight or 10 years worth of work. I tried to finance that on 20-year debt, SRF refinancing. We can't do it with a 3% rate increase annually, but we're, we're, we'll need to get an amendment to, or try to get an amendment to our CSO order at some point, but until we get.
point. But until we get the engineer on board and we start, and we start getting a more firm cost estimate and construction schedule, we're just not in a position to go and ask for it. The last time that we got a, a pushback or got an extension on that, we'd asked for longer than what we got and they essentially said, you need to be a little bit more firm in regards to what your actual costs are gonna be and know, and have a better plan of action for doing it before you come and ask us. And we'll certainly consider it and be willing to look at it favorably, but we're just not there yet. So, as you look at the dollars there, we have a significant amount of cash, but it's, when you start talking about three and a half million a year of projects or more, it just gets eaten up fairly quickly. And we have a couple of projects even online that we need to get done that will eat into, probably not be borrowed projects, but be things that will take a good chunk of that. You've got a sewer separation or sewer line to do down by the depot that maybe three hundred thousand. And then Harrison Street is, what's that? So. Okay, so yeah, we had to get a design work on that. We had a couple of spots too where we had some erosion at corners like Orthon. And well, some of those are gonna be stormwater or sewer. But we have, we do have a good chunk of projects to do with it. You're, but yeah, we only have two accounts that are the ongoing deficits that, that we'll have taken care of. The others are all projects that are in process during the course of the year.
Like a ground about, for instance.
Correct.
And that shows the deficit because we spent money, but we haven't gotten reimbursed?
Well, we have two pieces. We have, we, we have the state funds to get, which covers eighty percent of the cost, up to a certain dollar amount.
I think that's right.
And the local match on that, we, we were gonna use rise funds for and we haven't, we haven't, we've done an internal, essentially an internal loan, but we haven't really financed to throw the money over into the account. We'll have to do something with that and by the, by the end of the year.
Where do we, where are we on the ground about, Nick? Are we engineering plant, I'm sorry.
We, knock on wood, we should have a recorded property from Siemens. They were kind of the loan holdout.
Oh, yeah.
Dealing with the bureaucracy. We had a DR steam and then a Siemens transfer. So, we should have that closed out on. So, we should have a letting sometime here in the next couple of months.
Yay. Okay. Anything else?
Do you guys need any more questions?
Anything else, sir? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Mrs. Vaughn, annual joint safety report.
All right, guys, as usual, I have all kinds of information in here. You can read about what we've been doing over the last year. But if you go to where the tab is, the page the tab is on, that kinda gets you into where our joint safety rate numbers are. The city of Burlington. And, and remember, because of OSHA, the way we do this, we are a year behind always. Okay, they do the fiscal year or they do the current year. So, this would be two thousand fifteen, the whole year of two thousand fifteen on these numbers. Our fiscal year doesn't run with them. So, lost time accident rate for the city was two point oh-two, recordable rate was six point one-eight. And if you turn to the next page where we have the five-year statistical data, it shows what we've done in the last five years. This year was much stronger than last year. And we are still, if you look at the state of Iowa, the recordable rate is five point four, lost time rate is one point seven. For JSC entities, our recordable rate is only one point eight and lost time rate is point eight four. So.
We're in good shape.
We're in good shape. There was a question that came up about kinda the difference between the city and county, so I kinda wanted to address that. When you look at the city of Burlington and Moone County, we're really not comparing apples to apples in any way, shape or form.
You can see that by how many hours.
Yeah, the Burlington Police Department, as far as law enforcement and what they handle here in Burlington compared to what the Sheriff's Department handles, Sheriff's Department handles sixteen percent of what the Burlington PD handles. So, that's an incredible difference. We have our fire department, which they do not have, do not deal with. And I'm just gonna pick on the whole group back here. We got public works guys, you know, the secondary roads, what they deal with as far as public interference, traffic is nowhere even close to compared to what our city guys do. I've actually went out when some of the guys were working on the streets to kinda monitor what's going on with them. It's a challenge for them to be able, be able to focus on the safety of their job when they're focusing on the safety of cars driving by them at fifty miles an hour when they should be doing twenty-five.
Yeah.
And not watching out for them at all. So, they've got so many other factors that come into play. So, for what we've got, we're, we're hitting some really good challenges.
Well, even, even sanitary garbage pickup.
Yeah.
Bus drivers.
Yeah. So, very, very good. So, the next three pages after that actually shows what types of accidents we've had. And we did have some interesting ones that year, some things that were a little bit different than what we normally see.
Like poison ivy.
Yes, exactly. But if you look down at the bottom, we've decreased on three that are generally tend to be very high accident rates in most other entities. That's contusions, lacerations and sprains and strains. And of course, sprains and strains, if you look on the next page, we've decreased on neck injuries, knee, shoulder, back and elbow injuries. Those tend to be the injuries that drag out, are more long-term. We have tendonitis, we have meniscus tears, rotator cuff injuries.
Right.
Things that are more long-term, not only for us, but for the employees themselves. So, we're, we're getting there. We've got a ways to go, but we're getting there. Also, one thing I was really excited to look at was, on the next page, it talks about our lost time, recordable rates. Lost time days is a big cost for any entity or any group. Our lost time numbers, if you look from two thousand fourteen to the year two thousand fifteen, we had a great drop in that. We were figuring out ways to get them back to work quicker, finding things for them to build a do, kinda within their group. So, that, that's huge. So, and then just as a, kind of a follow-up, the last time I think we talked, we talked about some of the challenges the fire department was running into and we were trying to figure out ways to meet some of these challenges. And so, the last page, I put a description of what's been going on with the fire department. And if you look at two thousand fourteen, they had twenty incidents throughout the course of that year. That was kinda at the height of where we were running into some of those issues. Talking about issues they were running into with bariatric patients, some of the challenges that they were having a hard time meeting. Chief Truxell worked very hard. I worked with him on some equipment, some ideas. We did a lot of brainstorming about it. We even went up to Muscatine and talked to the head of EMS to see what they kinda were doing statewide. Brought in some new equipment. And as you can see, we've dropped considerably each year after that.
That's good.
So, down below I put in here, so you guys kinda had an understanding how huge this can be. In the unit, in the United States, there are twenty-three thousand injuries occurring daily. That equals eight point five million injuries and illnesses annually. This come to hu, comes to a huge cost to workers, their families and our economy. Approximately two hundred and fifty billion dollars is spent every year. A hundred and ninety-two billion is lost on workplace injuries, fifty-eight billion on workplace illnesses. Lost productivity and overtime cost adds another six billion every year. Median days away from work due to injuries and illnesses is nine, with more than a quarter of those being thirty-one days or more of lost time. So, just what we have seen in those, that two-year period with the different stuff that he's brought in, new procedures, new training programs, new equipment. He even brought in an exercise program, working with GRMC to make sure that they are physically handling any kind of situation that's coming up. They have made a seventy-five point nine percent difference in what we are seeing in accidents in two years.
That's remarkable.
That is, that's great. So, huge kudos to those guys. And I told Mark that since Matt's not here, he can stand up and take a bow. Take, take credit for it, but I, I'm very proud to see that. So, it was a great thing.
That's very good.
Okay.
I appreciate your goals here too. I think that's good.
No problem. And just to give you guys a heads up, Ryan Gorley is gonna be coming up for being re-elected to join our board. He is one of the guys that's up to date. So, on one of the next work sessions, we will, I'll send a letter for him. He's done an excellent job. He has some challenges in his own because they have a lot of, you know, summertime help, people that are not full-time employees, they come in seasonally. So, I think him being involved in that's been really good for him. So, any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Nick, you wanna talk about two hundred block of Jefferson?
Yep.
Yay.
Eric is throwing up a diagram with a cost estimate on what we've conceptually modeled out for parking changes. So, it, it resonates with what is done on the rest of Jefferson where there's parallel parking on the north side and then diagonal parking on the south. And then below, I have a, I would call it a rough estimate at fifty-six thousand dollars to go in and remove the existing paving and install new.
So, you have to remove some trees then, right?
Yeah, the trees are gone and the planters would have to go. The planters would, are, they're, they're fairly large and they're starting to fall apart.
So, you think this is doable?
I think it's doable.
On whose budget?
That's a good question.
I think that was being done out of the miscellaneous street projects. That or it'll come, would come out of road use tax.
Okay.
I mean, it would certainly qualify for some.
Yeah.
Other areas, but I think those make a lot of sense for what we're.
So, we'd be adding how many new parking places?
It would be an addition of fourteen.
Fourteen?
A total of eighteen spots.
And the timeline for doing this?
Well, I, I, would you like me to put this into motion? That, that's something I guess the council would like to.
The two of us would.
Yeah, that's hard to answer tonight.
Our, our goal was that this could be a project for this summer. So.
Great.
I think it's a great move though.
Yeah, I do too.
One of the things that we talked about whether to do or not and ultimately did not include in here was what Nick has put in there, you can see that it's establishing a, a new curb line for parking. This does not consider replacing the sidewalk between the buildings and that.
Correct.
That may be something that needs to be done over time, but that's not.
There, there, there will be some that potentially is disrupted because of utilities underneath that need to be pulled. It will be replaced with concrete. As of right now, it is exposed ag, but it does, a majority of it will stay.
Yeah.
And it's part of the discussion we've had with not including it. One of the biggest things, well, there's two things. At whose cost? Is that the property owners or the cities? But what is the long-term goal for what that corridor should look like? What should be the replacement concrete? Cause we found that, and I think most of the property owners along through there have found it's hard to match when you do work through there to try to get something to come back to what's that existing concrete.
Makes sense.
It's a lot more expensive than traditional concrete.
Downtown partners okay with this?
Yeah, fourteen new spaces and block is desperately needed. It's a good thing. I also want to compliment Nick on his COVID choice for the days.
We shout together.
Okay, if this happens, would, that's a different subject. The farmer's market moved down to that block or?
We, we currently occupy the three, four, five hundred blocks. I'm not sure.
You wanna come to the mic?
Yeah.
So, they, they can see on camera what you're talking about here.
That was not planned. Right now, the farmer's market goes through the three, four and five hundred blocks. I don't anticipate that we would add the two hundred block, although we did have more new vendors this past year with the move to Jefferson than we've ever had before. So, possibly in twenty eighteen, we'd be looking at using the two hundred block as well. The vintage market, which will be July fifteenth, is another issue and we can work on that. That was really large and they're talking about possibly expanding that to the two hundred block.
Yeah.
So, in terms of your timing, you know, we'll work on that.
Yeah.
If there's some way we need to work around.
All right. Well, we're all in favor, the two of us are really in favor of this. I'm sure the police chief is too.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Major Kramer had said that, you know, he didn't feel like there was a lot of public use of on-street parking where you're at now, but yeah. But yeah, it's definitely gonna be more inviting and it's gonna help the businesses that are in that block.
Right. Good deal.
And I met with Eric before, we talked about some of the plantings, but we will, I'll have engineering meet with them to see kind of what their thought process is.
Okay.
As we move further into this project.
Some of the minor details of where the trees are currently, where they need to go, so some of that stuff.
Thank you, Nick.
That downtown corridor is really getting active though. We were down there a couple nights ago and I thought, wow, good for Burlington.
What night was it? I went by there, there was a lot of traffic down there.
Traffic and the lights and I mean, it's, it's very attractive. Then you have the lighting scheme, of course, with the churches and all. I just, I'm gonna stay in this town, I'll tell you, it's good.
Okay, do you have anything? People in the back row, do you have anything? We're good? Happy New Year. We already said that, but.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Mr. Frenel.
And a Happy New Year.
Okay, remember, we're here on Tuesday next week. Go Hawks.